Minutes of August 26, September 2. Warrants, excess weight permit, approval of liquor license, correspondence, town hall update, racetrack, public comment adjournment. Can I entertain a motion?
Move to approve the agenda.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes of August 26.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Minutes of September 2nd, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, warrants. Accounts payable, ending 8/30/21 for $7,001.99. Accounts payable, 9/1 to 9/8, $10,125.20. Accounts payable for 9/10/21 for $44,919.15. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Accounts payable.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Payroll ending 9/3/21 for $10,659.17. Payroll ending 9/10/21 for $10,152.11. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, I'd like to open up for public comment if they have any questions on accounts payable. Megan, is there anybody raising their hand?
There's no one raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. Excess weight permit. That is for DF Transportation LLC. It's a log truck, 16 axle for logs, maximum weight 99,000. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion?
Well, on the discussion, is this something? We get these from Joel, right?
Yes. Joel proves them.
I've got some discussion on it.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Question too, but.
Okay, so we're in discussion.
So, this particular instance right here. I know that. I know they came to us, what's the date on the permit?
9/3/21.
So I know that they were operating without an excess weight permit or an application in before.
9/3.
Before 9/3. Okay. I think, I think that we need to come up with something. When somebody comes in after the fact, they've already been operating without an excess weight permit because every town has excess weight permits. This isn't unique to town, right?
If they get pulled over?
I don't know. That, that I'm not sure of. And I think, I think we either need to. My opinion, we either need to deny excess weight permits for a certain amount of time when somebody's already operating and then comes in, or we need to have a fine. And I don't know how to write that, or whatever, but, but it's just my opinion. I think the only reason they came in for an excess weight permit is because something happened, but I'm not totally positive of that. So I'm, I, it, when you come in after the fact, and it's a $10 fee, right? Is that what it is?
$5 and the check was made out on 8/23.
I think, I think a $5 fee, I think it's $10 for a fleet. I think is what it is, right Tim? Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's.
Received on 9/7 at 10/24.
And there's no reason, there's no reason that it wasn't done before they started hauling, in my opinion. They knew they were getting the job, I'm sure. Other people knew that this job was going on. It's been marked for a while. So, just my opinion.
So don't we have to put that in the bylaws or something before we can move forward?
I think we have to have an ordinance.
Or an ordinance.
Some sort.
Before we can move on it, but I agree with you.
Or, or the other thing is, the other thing is, we don't have to, we do not have to, even though Joel signs this, I don't believe we have to.
Approve it?
Approve it. That's, I don't think we have to. I'm not, I'm not positive about that. I didn't do any research on this. I didn't see it there in time, actually. I had other stuff going on.
Okay. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, Jamie?
Log trucks aren't exempt from our bridges, right?
Nothing's exempt.
I didn't think so. That's the only thing. I mean, if he's been in the Mount Anthony Road area, it's 99,000. I know that's well over the, the bridges.
My man.
Yeah. So.
Where are they going in and out?
I don't know. I, I don't know.
On Mount Anthony Road, they're coming out, they were coming off of Cold Storage.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know which way they were going there. I don't know if they were going back.
Up and around.
Uh, through the orchard. Out of Cold Storage, they're coming down Cold Storage and out Mount Anthony Road. But now they're coming out of the lower end of Mount Anthony Road.
Okay.
And the other thing they're doing is they're dragging an incredible amount of mud out into Mount Anthony Road.
I, I haven't noticed it. I drive that road. I mean, I live on that road.
I'm surprised the residents haven't said something to call us or said something to Joel. In that case.
So it depends on how, how far up they are, how many residents are passing.
There's not very, well, actually, there should be a bunch of them.
Yeah.
Down pretty low.
Yeah, and there's a, that's where it's more populated.
That's a little road. That's a rule we have. Turn your volume down.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, so that's, that's just my pet peeve. I, I mean, our, our local guys. Our, our. Even the guys that aren't local come in, you know, Greens Oil and RK Miles and West Oil, and there's a whole list of, of, you know, people that come in, Mike Tatro LLC comes in, they get their permits, you know, and they're, they're loggers out of Stanford. You know, or haulers, they're not loggers, but they haul, they run their log trucks. They, they come in and get their permits. Whatever, they get their permits every year. So I just, I just think that. Once again, I mean, we don't, I don't think we have to approve it. And, and I think we, this coming in after the fact, there's more than one, there, you know, and these are the, these are the guys that are coming in and tearing our roads up. And I'm not saying they are, because I don't think they are. But, but sometimes that's who's tearing our road up, if somebody doesn't even have a permit and there's nothing we can do about it, so to speak.
Right, nothing to file back.
We've got weight limits on these. Schedule two highways.
Right.
How come there's trailer trucks running up and down North Pownell Road?
That's what I'm saying, right? That's exactly what I'm going, no, that's exactly what I'm going after. That's, I've, I've, that's exactly what I'm saying, there's.
We just, we just spent money to get it fixed and everything else and.
There's a pool water guy who comes up and down these roads all the time, and he's got phone number right on his, right on the side of his truck. And unfortunately, I haven't been able to catch him to get his phone number, but I'm going to. I'm gonna find out who it is, because you're absolutely right. We just re-blacktopped, you know, that's an 8,000 gallon truck and he's gonna go, he's been up Hidden Valley Road. Not since it's been blacktopped, because it just got done the other day, but he has gone up Hidden Valley Road and filled the pool across the road from my house. With, with 8,000 gallons of water. Now, you do the math, right? 8,000 gallons and 8 pounds a gallon, okay?
4,000 pounds.
Just the water.
Yes, not counting the truck.
Not counting the truck. So, um, that's exactly what I'm saying, Randy. We either deny permits, or we, we set up some kind of an ordinance where we can fine them for being in town overweight. And I believe if they're on our, if they're on the state highway. Then, then the state gets the money, but I believe if they're on North Pownell Road or one of our town roads, don't we get the money if the Sheriff's Department writes them?
A percentage.
Pretty good percentage of it, though.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly.
Whatever. I just think it's time. I think it's time. Everybody's walked all over Pownell forever and, oh, they don't, they won't do anything. Yeah, well, it's time to start. In my opinion.
They run them vehicles, even if they're empty, they're overweight for the highway. It's only 20,000 pounds.
Yeah, 24, I think, right? This is a, this is a triaxle, I think it's a triaxle truck with a, with a pop trailer behind it. I know exactly what it is.
Yeah.
There's more than one.
Okay, so what, what's your pleasure?
Well, you have a motion.
You have a motion on the table. Those in favor?
Aye. I mean, we're, if we're gonna, if we're going to start bringing the hammer down, I think we need to do.
We need to make an ordinance?
We need to, not a, I don't think we need a new ordinance. I think we need to amend our traffic ordinance, right? Just an amendment to that ordinance.
And once we do that, we have to wait, is it 60 days?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
And then, uh, and just because, I mean, if, if Joel has recommended it, then I would say we go ahead and do this, but let's make it. And, and do we want to bring in Joel and talk and, and find out what he thinks about it, get some input from him? Because we don't, we don't have all the facts right now. Right? I mean, even, even Mike, as you were saying, and I agree with you, we need to do something, but, but, but we, we need to have the facts on it. It feels like we're punishing somebody without, without knowing all the facts yet. And I, but if we need to do it.
Well, when you take a trailer truck going down North Pownell Road, or going on, on Barbara's Pond Road and stuff like that, trailer trucks now. Not talking to, you know.
Like a 53 foot trailer?
Or bigger.
Yeah.
That tanker was at least a, over 6,000 gallon tanker. I meant, right in the dark woods. I had to get off the road so he could hit the corner. That's how big he was, so come on, that's.
That's right.
Enough with that.
Was that this transportation provider, and does that impact our vote on this particular instance? That's, that's my only question.
I thi, I think the thing that impacts my vote on this more than anything is, is it's after the fact.
Right, I understand that.
Right, it, but is it after the fact because he didn't know the process? Or is it after the fact because he talked to Joel and Joel made, asked him to do it? Some of the other ones that you were, I, these are the questions that we.
No, I understand. I totally understand where you're coming from. I just.
I know how long he's been in business.
I mean, the answer to that might be, he was completely negligent in what he did, but, but we haven't asked those questions.
I'm pretty sure, and there again, I'm not 100% positive, but excess weight permits are required, I think, on any.
Throughout the state.
Any class 2, 3 road throughout the state because of state aid.
Okay, and then the, the other side of that is, even though it's after the fact, what would have happened if he came in before and did it? Would the end result be exactly the same? He would have been using our roads because we approved it, we got the $5. So, you know.
The $5 is a formality. What, what the permit does is, is they have to bring in their proof of insurance. So if they do tear the road up, then their insurance.
Right, right. But if we approve this, then that brings them up to speed. Now, maybe it's not the right thing to do. He should have come in first. I agree with that statement. But I mean, uh, I just want to make sure that we're not punishing somebody without ever having talked to them, and we really don't know. We, I, I think we need to talk to Joel, because he'll have more direct, direct communication with the individual. Um, and I, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not, we're not just using him to send a message. But we do need to send that message that we are going to, we're gonna crack down, but let's, if we're gonna crack down, let's amend our policy. And, and going forward, let's crack down.
Let's get our ducks in a row and.
All right, I agree with that.
I can do some research on the excess weight stuff, because it is through the state. There's a whole.
Yeah.
Thing you can. At least.
Yeah.
Brush up on. I'll look into that.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. Moving on to approval of liquor license for the American Legion. This is for outside. Can I entertain a motion?
I'm moved to approve that.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it?
Back to unanimous.
No, that's right. That's what makes government.
All right, correspondence. I just wanna announce that we got one. I hope I don't say her name right, wrong. Michelle Perkrow?
Perkrow. Yeah.
She sent an email for Leonard Cody, which is our animal control officer, that he's doing a fantastic job. He's quick to respond. He helps her with a rabbit on Route 7. She's so glad he's a part of the town. And he's a great addition to the town, and I couldn't agree more. I've heard nothing but great things about him. I see him every day. He tells me about everything that's going on. I mean, if you call him and you get his answer machine, leave a message, and he will get back to you within a half an hour.
I've heard a lot of good things about him. I'm really glad we got him.
I haven't heard one negative.
Nothing, nothing negative.
Not one negative thing.
And kudos to Michelle also for taking the time to.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, does anybody else have anything with correspondence? No? Okay. Town hall update, Mike, that's you.
Well, it's my team, which is Tim is a part of that.
Yes, well, I bet. You're, you're gonna do the talks.
Well, Tim might have some.
Tim can jump in if he has anything.
Tim's kind of been, Tim's kind of been carrying some of the load, more than I have the last couple of weeks since school started back up, or whatever. But we're, we're working together still, is pretty good as a team. So we've got some updates on that. The, um, schoolhouse portion, the, the concrete foundation was poured today. The entire schoolhouse section is now poured. The concrete, they finished that today. The boxes are scheduled for delivery the 15th through the 22nd. Is that what it was?
23rd to the 27th.
Oh, they changed that since I've seen, okay.
Of October, right?
No. September. Okay.
And the set date is now October 6th.
Yep, the set date is now October 6th. Which this is a little bit off this subject, but not really. I know Jennifer, um, from Parks and Rec had sent us an email yesterday. Um, about, uh, the town picnic in, and trying to get it done before October 4th, because that's when the, um, porta potty was leaving. I'd like to give her an opportunity. And if the select board, if we have to pay for a couple of weeks. I don't want to try to put her under the gun to have it on the 4th or before. I guess is where I'm coming from. So if we had the porta potty there for an extra couple of weeks, it would give her a little more time to get her picnic or whatever weather related in. You know, I, I, I think she's doing a great job with the, with the rec committee. And I, I just want to give her that, that option to be able to pick a couple more weeks work with.
How much, how much money is?
Bob, I have no idea. Just a thought I had, popped in my head.
It's 100 a month.
125 a month.
It's 125 a month, so for 125 we can.
125, we could push it off till November 4th.
We can have it that long to plan it? Yep, okay.
You know, I just, I just want to be able to give her that option to, you know, to, to get her thing and plan it and do what she wants to do. They've worked hard. They've done, they've done tremendous things down there. They have, they have a lot of stuff going on. I just want to give her that option.
I agree.
I agree.
I don't know if we need a motion on that, but if we do, I'll make a motion that we.
Why don't we just make a motion?
Extend it to, for, for one month, and the, and the select board will pay that month, um, fee.
All right, second that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Need it for more than a month.
Well, and then, if the workers might need it, right? And that was a thought. Right.
Right.
Shit in the pail and throw it out the.
They come to the town hall. All right. Tim, do you have anything to add to Mike?
Nope, that's it. The October 6th date, that was, I said that right, yes.
Yep, yep. We're, you know, we're, we're, um. I gotta talk to you. We gotta get, um, hold a guntload tomorrow, or whatever, any amount, but that's, you know, things, things are moving forward. Not, not quite as fast as what we were hoping for, you know, we're, we're about a month, basically, I guess, behind schedule, because they were gonna set it initially on the 31st of August, or right around there, so, you know. But there's, it's, there's so many variables going on between, between them and between us and, you know. But we're not, we're not really that far off target.
Just a, a quick question on what the, uh, what about the moving of the schoolhouse? I mean, I know we just poured it, right? We just poured the schoolhouse.
The, the schoolhouse, more than likely, unless we get some incredible weather, the moving of it won't take place until next spring.
Okay.
So we have to do some things on the foundation, but the foundation portion of it is poured. It's poured for the schoolhouse itself. It's not, it's not poured smaller. It's poured to the, to the exact size of the schoolhouse. You know, it's, it's poured where guntload related hell, it's, you know, contrary to popular belief. We're not downsizing the schoolhouse. That building is being moved to the site and attached to the modulars.
Yep, yep.
So, there's, there's this, there's a lot of rumors going around about different things, and I just want to make sure we try to cover all of them.
Well, just the fact that the cement's poured.
Absolutely. As, as it's coming.
That's right, that's right, so.
I, I honestly thought that cement had already been poured. I thought it was poured with the other stuff, but I guess that's not.
They put the footings in, right?
So, so I don't want to use this word. It's been poured in different. For lack of a better word, stages, because that's kind of how you do the process. You know, if you were to come in here and pour that whole entire foundation, you know, you have to pour the footings first anyways. And then, then you do your rebar, you know, and you tie it all up, and then you, then you pour your walls. So, so it's, it's been different stages of, of pouring the entire foundation. But the only. If I'm not mistaken, and I'm pretty sure I'm not. The only concrete left to be poured is the floors.
For the vault?
In, in the two main buildings. The walls in the vault. Area. We have the precast, um, floor and, no, they have to pour the vault floor.
Which I think they're doing on Friday. They're not filling it this week and they'll, on Friday.
Right, and so, so that's, so we have to pour the floor in the vault, we have to pour the walls in the vault. We have to pour one more footing down through the main portion, the modular portion for support. And then the floors in the two, the, the schoolhouse in the, in the main building. That's, that's the only concrete left to be poured, to the best of my knowledge. I'm pretty positive I'm right on that.
And the timing on that is gonna be plenty of time for it to cure.
We're good for the modular now, because our, our modular, that, that part is totally cured. We're, we're way good on that part there. We're, and anything that has to do with the modular portion of the building is we're over cure time now for that. We're, we're in the, in the clear for that, for sure.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to racetrack. That's also you, Mike.
It is. So I asked for the racetrack to be put on the agenda tonight, because I knew we weren't extremely busy tonight. I think, I think it's time that we, as a board. Get going on the racetrack. It's been a year since, since the building burnt. Um, I think we've given the owners plenty of time to operate and do things on their own. And we've reached out to them several times over that period. I know, I know, personally, I have reached out several times. The last time I did reach out was in April. I looked it up. I, I think we opened the road down there. I think, I think we've had that road gated off long enough. It is a town road. And we've had a gate on it. And I think we, we start pursuing what we can make them or not make them or whatever do to secure that site. And to start something going on down there. And, and people can give me the COVID thing all they want, but there's construction going on everywhere.
Yep, yep.
Okay, don't, don't play the COVID card with me, because it's, it's, you might as well burn it. It's done. As far as I'm concerned. I just think, I just think we've waited and given ample opportunity. We've given a year. And I think that's plenty of time for someone to get some stuff secured and get going on it. And I think now we say, okay, enough is enough, and this is, this is what we need to do.
I agree. We, we've given them a lot of time, and I'm usually very much on the side of the, you know, the private, the private owners. But this is enough is enough, and that, it, it's not a safe building.
Rebecca, are you still there?
I am still here.
Did we send one or two certified letters? The health officer sent one that we asked.
Well, I, I, I'm not, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
I know off the top of my head. I do know, I mean, back in the beginning, we had those conversations with him. We sent him the assurance of discontinuance. He never signed it.
But he never signed it.
That was our first attempt at trying to, to work with. And, and now I believe at this point he's pretty much absent. So, I, you know, you probably need to start going the Board of Health route and bringing in fire and safety and working with the state on this.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so.
They haven't taken and reached out to us.
No, not at all.
Or anything, so.
Nope. I mean, we asked them to.
Well, he came to me with a tentative plan. You know, but, but I asked him after he came with the tentative plan, because I'm not, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you guys and, and the public that there's a plan going on if I don't have something in front of me that's fairly concrete. Because I can tell you, I can come up with a plan that's going on. And what good is it unless I have an email that says, or, and I asked for an email?
Actual proof.
That's right.
That's right.
So, you know, exactly, a permit pulled or whatever. So I, I'm, I'm not at liberty to say what's going on or what isn't going on, because I don't have any proof of it. It comes back to the excess weight permit, but.
Really, yeah.
Without, without having some sort of. A, a letter of intent, anything. We have nothing, and, and we haven't had correspondence since April. I could look it up. I think, I think. April 30th, I sent him, I think is when it was. It was in April, anyway. I sent him a text message, um, reaching out to him. I'd, I've had phone conversations with him before that. I just think enough is enough, and, and now it's time.
Okay, so when do you wanna, um, open the, do you wanna open the road before?
I, I think we should open the road tomorrow. To be honest with you.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I, I just think that, open the road. Let them.
To save, you know.
It's not our responsibility, is the town, to keep the road closed, to keep people out of his personal property.
Correct.
Or their personal property. I guess it's a group of owners. It, it seems like at this point in time, they've had plenty of time to fence this off and do whatever to keep people out of their.
Do you have a suggestion? Okay, um, I really think, I understand your desire to open the road. I think that the opening of the road, you might want to consider doing that in conjunction with issuing a health order. So I think you might want to, we want to talk to GJ Jarrow up at the state and see if they're taking any action, whatever's going on there. And then we talk to our health officer, and after those conversations, we have a meeting, and the Board of Health issues a health order with all of the requirements of the things that need to happen, with fines in place if they're not met, a timeline, all of that, and then you open that road. I would be, I would just be very cautious about opening that road without some documentation and some forward-moving action to support that legally, so you're not placing the town at liability. Since you did take the responsibility of closing it, now you're gonna take the responsibility of opening it. You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay, that's just my non-lawyer opinion. I'm not a lawyer.
We appreciate your opinion.
I think those are really, really good points. This ought to be coordinated. We ought to know all of our steps before we start taking steps. And just, just lay it out. I think we have some, we need to be expeditious about it, so we need to get a hold of fire and safety. We need to figure out how, what are the steps that we need to take, and then lay it out and, and then execute the plan. Not, uh, just, as Rebecca was saying. But I, I agree with Mike. We need to take action now.
I don't know if fire and safety would take the lead on it, because they're the ones that shut it down.
Fire and safety is gonna take the lead on it, because I would think, because fire and safeties put the guideline in or, or whatever your stipulation, that it had to be fenced off. That was fire and safety.
Correct.
That was not the town. And nothing, there's no fence. They've done nothing. So I think fire and safety, if we, if we contact fire and safety, and say, okay, the town's had enough, let's move forward with this. I think fire and safety is gonna jump on board with us. I, I really do. They were, they were awesome when I was down there dealing with them and.
Yeah, GJ's very supportive. I think all we have to do is reach out to him and talk to him and tell him where we're at.
Well, if we let them know that nothing's been done, um, per their order, then they'll take action.
And I think, you know, if Tim, if Tim or Megan could reach out to them tomorrow and include me, if you guys want. I, I have no problem being included in this process, um, because of zoning and, and being, you know, being a board member as well. I, and I've already been part of it, but if somebody else wants to take it.
I'm gonna object again. I really think you should have me call GJ. I'm going to object again. I really think you should have me call GJ Jarrow. I'm the one who has the legal background, doing the legal assistant work on the whole thing. Like, I know the questions to ask. You know, I would be happy to do a conference call, Mike, with you and.
No, no, that's fine, Rebecca. That's totally fine. I, it, that's, you know, I, and I don't even, I don't even have to be the one. If somebody, if another board member or whatever wants to jump in, that's fine with me, but, you know, I'm, I'm willing to do it, so.
Okay, that sounds like a plan. Why doesn't Rebecca do that and Mike? Or do you want to do it, Jamie?
I don't care.
What do you, are you, are you over?
No, I'm fine. No, I'm fine with doing it. I'm, I'm fine with doing this. It's my, you know, it was kind of my project to start with, and I don't mind seeing it through. I, I just.
Mike, we'll, we'll talk tomorrow. We can set it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I just, I just think it's time.
All right. Anything else? On the racetrack?
No.
That's it. Okay, public comment? Please remember to raise your hand and then state your full name, please.
I have one thing on public comment.
Okay.
Um, and I didn't, I didn't put it on the agenda because it wasn't going on when we did the agenda, really. Um, I believe all of our black topping was completed today. Um, I saw Basin headed north when I was coming home at four-thirty with their equipment loaded. Um, so I believe all of the blacktop, um, the, for this year has been done. Um, I want to say that I, I saw those guys. I saw what they were doing firsthand on Putting Stone, Joel, and I had to look at something up there last, this week and um, I'm, I'm very happy, at least on the surface, because of, for what, for what I saw of what was going on. Um, I think, I think they were an incredibly professional outfit, and I can't say that anybody else wasn't.
Right.
I've never worked with anybody else. Just what I saw of them on Putting Stone Road, I thought they were incredibly professional and, and did a really good job, so.
That's good to hear.
Good. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, that's it. I just wanted, I, I couldn't, we didn't have time to put it on the agenda.
Okay. So, any public comment? Please raise your hand.
Jim?
Hello there, I'm Jim Koses, um, North Mason Hill Road. First of all, I just want to thank Rebecca for bringing up the, uh, or putting kind of like a little, um, yellow flag out there about the decision of the, opening of the road at the racetrack. But I don't want to ask any questions. It's just my hope that when you speak about the fire and safety, I'm getting involved. I kind of heard in there, it was just kind of to fence off the building itself. I'm just hoping that, that, um, eventually, because there was a fire, and we've gone so many years with that building down there, and nothing happening yet, happening to it. I'm just worried that the owners down there have us kind of, um, um, twisted around their finger that they can just do what they want. So I'm hoping by winter, that building is either totally boarded up completely, so no one can get into it, or hopefully, um, torn down completely. And then hopefully, there'll be a location that, um, some kind of industrial might be able to come into, um, to help out panel a little ways. Um, but thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Anybody else, Megan?
There's no one else raising their hand.
We'll give it a few seconds. I don't want to miss anybody.
Uh, Joel sent me a text that the, the blacktop is going to be done tomorrow. We're not quite done. So I spoke a little bit out of turn, but.
You said they did a good job.
Well, yeah, and, you know, and I saw some equipment headed north, so I just, you know, made that assumption, but.
Well, for everybody that watches this tomorrow.
It'll be done.
So I saw their truck in that big street going up through there.
Yeah, so, you know, like, they, you know, you know, they, their trucks weren't speeding through town. I had, I had residents telling me how nice it was to have, even though they started pretty early in the morning, their trucks were going up Barbara's Pond Road at thirty, thirty-five miles an hour instead of screaming up through and, and.
That's nice to hear.
Yeah, so.
I'm not going to tell nobody.
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay, do you have a second?
I can do it.